Okay, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this Board of Select meeting to order for January 25th at 7:00 PM and ask that you please rise for the pledge of allegiance, as long as I can share them. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. To the republic which is standing here. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I have. All right. We'll go through with the roll call, please.
Cathy.
Kathy.
And Kevin Cunningham.
Becky Hewitt.
We have a package of approvals for the minutes. We have January 4th, January 7th, both special ordinance workshop meetings. We also have January 11th, the regular meeting, and January 14th, which was a special meeting to set the date for our town meeting. Would you like them individually or as a group?
I'll make a motion, accept the meeting minutes for January 4th, January 7th, January 11th, January 14th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion's on the table and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adam C. is public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak? Hearing none, go to old business and we'll come back to that and circle around at the end. But new business, we do have item one, which is consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax collector. Totally $227.97 as follows. Evan S. Bernard for $51.22. Rider truck rental LT for $176.75. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds of $227.97 as reported.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. On to item two, which is discuss an act on rehabilitation ordinance. We have an approach to discuss an item for rehab area ordinance. We do have with us tonight Mary Ann Chanati and Mary Ellen Hall, who have actually worked on this together, I believe. In the packet that you have, it talks about the enterprise zone, which is allows the property owners to do tax referral benefits. And in the packet, it talks about how there is proposal concerning designated rehab areas from House Bill number 5585. And that if such properties brownfield is defined in section 329 CC, new multifamily rental house, cooperative housing, common interest communities or mixed use, commercial structures of such property, and it goes on to list all the benefits of having a municipality have a general rebound of how these rebounds help. If you see in your packet, there's also a very good listing here for rehab ordinance and how it impacts and helps in support of the progress of a building for rehab. Now, if you've had a chance to read through, you'll notice that it is a, it starts off as an 11-year process, and there's an actual rehab area program resolution in front of you. So if you have the time to read through, this would be a great time to ask questions of both Mary Ellen and Mary Ann are here.
When was that packet prepared? Because I was there Thursday and I didn't receive anything.
Yeah, we had it later in the afternoon because there were so many more things being added on. We have right now. Yeah, it was probably about an hour after you were here, we had more things that were being added in. So I do apologize for that, but what I could do in the future is just have the Lisa or someone give you a call saying the packet is ready so that you can come at that time. That helps out. It changes rapidly and there's a lot of things going on as you can see by what's on the agenda. There's a lot of things happening on a regular, you know, usually it's last minute stuff. But I do apologize. If you wanted Cathy, to be fair, if you wanted to table this one, because I think it's important that we all talk about this and at least get some, some background to it and have our opinion about it. That's no problem. You know, entertain a motion to table, that's fine.
Ask my questions first?
Sure. Because I might get a discussion for the next meeting.
Huh?
That'll give us a discussion for the next meeting.
Yep. I just had a couple. First, you're going off of this House Bill number 5585, the public act. That's in the package.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's other things that are going on with it too. Mary Ann and Mary Ellen, if you wanted to add in.
But my question is. Where it says about the time periods of the rehabilitation or construction, it's just unclear to me. Is that seven years? Are they saying you can complete the project in seven years?
This is an 11-year, Mary Ann Chanati Town Planner, this is an 11-year benefit which replaces the enterprise corridor zone benefits that are available currently to businesses and new businesses coming in. That's the only enticement the town has as far as commercial and industrial development goes. That's scheduled to sunset in 2022 on June 30th because in 2017, the town was determined by the state of Connecticut to no longer be considered a distressed municipality. So this is being proposed to replace that so the town would at least have one incentive to offer businesses, both existing and new. This particular proposal does not include residential uses. This is strictly limited to the commercial and industrial. It also includes new construction on vacant properties. For example, if a developer comes in and buys a vacant commercial lot and wants to put his building there, he would be able to apply for this benefit. And while I'm on that subject, if I could apologize, also in your packets, along with the resolution and the criteria was a draft application. On page two of that application, under type of work, it specifies new building with a couple of asterisks, and it says new building is eligible only if a replacement for demolished, comparably sized structure, et cetera. However, as we were going through this, it was determined that the benefit should be applicable to new construction on vacant land as well as rehab and tear down rebuilds. So I apologize, but the correction was not made to delete those two asterisks and get rid of the definition of what those asterisks stand for. That, that it just did not carry through when we made revisions to the proposed resolution.
And on that last page, it talks about the different increments of taxable items for renovation. It breaks it down to, you know, it's a smaller renovation that there's a basically it's a four-year with the first one being zero because it's probably still in construction at that time. And then the second one is the higher value up to 100,000 basically and comes to seven years. And the final one is a larger remodel or renovation where it goes into a 100,000 or higher, which gives that 11-year program.
So the length of time basically is, is dependent on the cost of the project.
So when the applicant comes forward, we would have that information if we ever chose to go forward with this and then in the future I voted to, to have a different application applied to per building.
Back to my questions. Now you raised another one because I did have a question that was just for housing, but now you're telling me it's not for housing at all. It seems, it seems like it's for housing.
Yeah.
The resolution?
No, because number one, now therefore be it resolved by the town of Plainfield that non-residential real properties within the town are hereby designated.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that's, that's the change from the state one, right? Because the state was mostly the residential, I think.
Right.
For housing. Okay, so my next question was, would be on page two of that.
Page two of the resolution?
Yes. Section 4B. This, this is where I need clarification of. It seems like you could take seven years to rehab the project at the end of there. From the date of completion of such rehabilitation, which shall be within seven years of the date of agreement. Is that stating that?
Right. The, the project has to be completed in seven years.
Okay.
It has to be built or remodeled or the building has to be replaced. The work has to be done.
So then at that point, do they only have four years left on the assessment? With deferral or do they have yet another 11 years?
No, it wouldn't be an additional 11 years. They would apply for the program and Mary Ellen, please correct me if I'm wrong because this is really an assessment question.
I mean, I would go, the benefit would go after their certificate of occupancy is how I would, I would apply that benefit.
Because it, it states by the date of the agreement. So you're going to do the agreement at the beginning of the rehab, I would think.
Yeah.
So then it works 11 years from that day.
No, the work has to be done within seven years of the date of the agreement. And then once the CO is issued, correct, Mary Ellen, that's when the 11 years or however long the time period would kick in.
Maybe you can clarify that there then. Back up to section three and the definitions. It, it looks to me that it's just going to be for exterior use, exterior fixes, not interior or?
The benefit would be to any increase in assessment. So whether it be interior or exterior, the benefit would be applied to.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
All right, I think we can still, we have a motion to table.
I'd like to make that motion to table.
And I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number three, we're talking about consider an act on resolution creating a charter revision commission and then adding such members to that said committee. So I gave you a packet that has some names in it. And all of the I did receive more today. So I have letters here from Ross Chivik, a letter from Frank Mills, a letter from June Gagne. I know Trav, you're on, you're asking to be on, but you haven't sent an actual letter yet. Also, we have Linda Jarden who sent the letter in and Virginia San Pedro had sent the letter in.
And how many members are you looking for, Kevin?
This, this, according to the state statute says anywhere from five to 15. I'm thinking between five and seven would be enough to be workable to get this going and I'm actually working on a calendar to help everybody out. So the calendar will be, you know, in place. So it's, it's not a hard calendar, but it's a calendar that tells them, you know, 15 days from this, you have to have the next step going. And then the two public meetings, and we were talking about public meetings a while ago and we decided to stop the first grouping, but working with the state of Connecticut on what we can do for using public meetings in a, in multiple sessions here with either in person based on the numbers changing from the state or hybrid, which could be something where we have a live stream in a facility where we could have the public be able to utilize live stream. And part of the public, they had to, but didn't have that access could also come in. So we're working on those issues right now. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can, we can nail that down. So we had I'm, I'm looking for basically between five and seven to get us going. We have
We have the five right now with the names that you just mentioned.
Yes.
Did I miss somebody? Because I have June, Frank, Ross, Lynn, and Ginny. Was there another one?
You know, I didn't get the actual letter from, from Trav, but other than that, that would be number six. But I mean, we could start with five if we wanted to modify and as people were still putting in our requests, we can do that. And I think according to the town charter, it talks about the the way that the setup is supposed to be for representation and right now, if we were to vote just initial five in, Ross, Frank, June, Lynn, and Virginia, that would constitute three Dem, two Republican. So it still fits, you know, within the way the charter states.
So right now you're just looking for a motion to act on the resolution to create that charter revision committee.
Well, we did last meeting to create, well, actually you're right, to create the charter commission, committee with the following names.
So if Art has no questions, or I'll make a motion to act on adding the members to the charter revision to create the charter revision commission.
And those five people that you had or names you had would be the Ross, Frank, June, Lynn, and Virginia?
Yes.
Okay.
And now you said Trav, you would add after that because he didn't submit his letter. Is that correct?
Right. I would like to see that letter would come in and I know there was one or two other people who were interested and we can talk about that at the next meeting. That way we can officially do it. It is great to have an odd number. That's why they usually have it in the state statute between five and 15. That way you can move forward on it. So we can, we can talk about that at the next meeting, but you have initiated five people to go forward.
I'll second.
All right, well, second. Any other discussion other than I do appreciate the fact that people who are looking to help move the charter forward and thank you very much. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move into the next item on the agenda. Item number four, discuss an act on updated version of the town employee COVID-19 policy. This is that moving target that continues to move only because of the way that the state of Connecticut and CDC have determined some items which are, what are the, you know, what are the items that we what are the items that we have to look at? So if you notice here, what we've done is we've actually helped to model this off of another town or two, merging some of the items we thought might be best. And just so you can get an idea, we talked about, you know, making sure you get to your doctor and using telemedicine if possible. We talked about the symptoms and the temperatures and you'll notice on page one, I think it says right there, it says, you know, it's a 10-day period. So versus the 14 we had before. On the second page, it was talking, making sure that we talked about 72 hours for the symptoms and COVID not improving. And I think on the third page, you're talking about the two substantive changes, which would be employees shall get a COVID test. If results are negative, they can return to work after a 10-day quarantine. And that's on number three. And number five, it talks about with the input from the board of selectmen, because you're trying to handle them on a case-by-case basis as they come in. And you might hear that, well, okay, I was already starting to isolate and I've already taken the test. I'm waiting for the return. So we have to, you know, be working on a one-on-one basis with each person and we're getting help with the Northeast District Department of Health. And also, you know, we're getting, trying to work through each item, each detail. So it makes it a little easier when you have it written here for each of our employees. Are there questions on what we've proposed?
So the only thing, Kevin, when I was reading through it, if you look at page one in your third paragraph where it says if an employee may have or has had any of the following symptoms within the last 10 days that are unrelated to another known health condition, what is the end of that sentence? What is?
Well, it, it talks about the conditions below. That's why it's got the colon to go down below and take a look at these symptoms. It's unrelated to another known health condition. It could be anything. I mean, people have talked about how they felt like they had the symptoms of a cold. So it may or may not include a fever. Or all the way around, they may just have vomiting. We're trying to loop them in as best we can according to the way the state of Connecticut has been helping us to say, these are the things we're looking for. Again, this is that moving target.
I mean, I'm, I'm putting it all together, but it's just the sentence just ended. So does that mean that they can't come to work or what are they supposed to do?
Yeah, we would prefer that they don't come to work if they have the multiple symptoms to say, look, I don't feel well, just like you would if you're, normally if you're sick with any of the you know, you don't want to have a share of, an issue where you don't know if it's food poisoning or if it's actually the flu and you're, you're, you're vomiting. So you don't want to share that obviously. So we'd ask you to stay home and monitor it. Try to get your tests as soon as possible and get the results back in. As, as we also noted, the, the federal government changes on the fly as well. Remember we had the FFCRA, which they had access to? Well, that ended on December 31st.
Right.
I thought that they would have actually tried to implement that again to help out, but they haven't to this point. So we are desperately trying to catch up with how other towns are working with the state and how they've written their policies to say that we're doing our best to try to maintain.
And like you stated, that changes on a daily basis.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's why we're trying to do the, the one-on-one basis, trying to do some discussions with each of the employees to say, have you, have you done this? Have you done that? What are the symptoms? And trying to work it through with them to let them know that the best thing right now is caution. Safety and caution to stay home and monitor and we'll do our best. At the end of this meeting, I'll talk about something else which is related to this. We're talking about doing testing in town, so I'm working with the health district on that.
Then the only other two things, Kevin, it was just words either missing or the wrong word there. So if you look at page five, under the guidance for department head with employee test positive, and you have upon awareness in number one, it says report the cost to the first selectman. I think you mean report the case.
Page five. Which grouping is that?
So at the top of page five, under the guidance for a department, I think you, it's supposed to be report the case to the fourth selectman or finance department, not the cost.
Right.
And then at the bottom of the page, where you have promote and maintain social distance. Where it states where there is interaction with the public, appropriate see-through materials. You left out has been installed right after the parentheses of glass or plexiglass.
Yep.
And then the only other one that I noticed was on the next page where you have avenues to report concerns or violations. Concerns may be reported to a department head and/or department head.
And/or get rid of the department head second time.
Yeah, you just have it twice there. That's all.
All right. All right. So you have three requests for modification to delete the multiple department heads on that line. Page prior to that is, has been installed for the plexiglass. Up at the top would be report the results to the first selectman because they've taken the positive test and now they want to report the results back to the first selectman finance department.
That's the only thing, Kevin, that I saw in it.
All right, thank you. Hart?
My only question was on page two. Number six, it talks about returning to work. And at the end it says, and all the symptoms of COVID-19 are improving. Then you go to page one, two, you go to page four about traveling. And they can return to work when they're free of COVID symptoms at the end.
How far down on the page is that one?
That's the last sentence on both. One talks about them improving before you can come back to work. One talks about being free of symptoms.
Got it.
Before you can return to work.
So if we change number six on page two to be matching what's on page four?
Yeah, because you don't, you don't, I don't know. You know the guidelines better. What was the health department say about improving conditions or?
To remain free.
Great, okay. Then that should be changed, yeah. Other than that, I like the policy. I like that it has guidelines for them to go by, the employees and the employers or department heads.
All right. So the changes that we have been suggested are on page two, number six, instead of are improving, at least 72 hours of other symptoms of COVID and to remain free of COVID symptoms. And then the other ones that were suggested for page five, I think, is it five?
Five and six, I think.
Page five and six, where we talked about the results up on awareness of a positive. Report the results to the first selectman for our finance department. At the bottom of the page is, has been installed for the plexiglass.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on page six, just take out a department head.
Yes, the duplication. All right, with those changes.
There is one, there is one more.
Yep.
On page three, number one. I don't know if, is that supposed to be six feet or more or six feet four more than 15 minutes? It should be four, I believe. Instead of or. Like fourth line down, third line down.
Yep.
Got it?
Understood.
Can I ask a question about number three there? Employees shall get a COVID test. If results are negative, they can return to work after 10-day quarantine. If they're negative, why do they have to wait?
Well, again, if symptoms could be, and for COVID, the way we were taught, if you have been in contact with someone who has COVID and you get a negative test, that's great, but you may then develop some of the symptoms and become ill during that 10-day incubation period. So that's why we try to be safe for everybody.
That's it.
Okay. So we have those modifications.
A lot of motion to?
With modifications, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the new COVID-19 policy for town employees with the modifications we just spoke of.
I'll second that.
And any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next one. All right, on item five, it talks about an act of removing appointed members of the board for good cause. You'll notice that on the charter, it says on section 79, removal of members of appointed boards. It's, this is pretty simple. It is that there are two members of one commission who have not been to meetings one for well over two years, I believe. So I'm going to ask that you consider just to make a motion to remove them as appointed members so we can get other people who are interested moving forward. These are two members of the conservation commission. The motion would be to, according to town charter, section 79, for the removal of John Meyer and Eugene Goss from members of these, of the conservation commission.
Remove.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And we do have some people waiting in the wings. So that's very helpful. All right, next one up is, so according to town charter, section 81C, it's actually the duty of the selectman to appoint department heads. And we have not done so for a couple of people and I have to apologize for, for one definitely, Rick Uh, Rick Martell is here. He's the department head uh for the building inspector department. Um, and so it would be entertaining a motion to accept Rick Martell as a department head for building inspector.
I'll make that motion to accept Rick Martell for um the department head for building inspector.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second one is uh the new full-time um uh department head for recreation. Uh, his name is Mark Simmons. And we would also entertain a motion for that as well uh to get him started in his next venture.
I'll make a motion to approve Mark Simmons as department head for recreation.
Okay.
So Kevin, I have not, um, I didn't see anything on Mark, any resume or anything. So um I'm I'm not going to accept that motion. I'm not going to second that motion. I really like to see his resume and.
Sure. Understood. I can also put a copy of his resume in your packet for when he come in. So you can see that as well. But I will second that um motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
So Kevin, did you start already?
Yes, last, uh, this past week.
And how many applicants did you have?
Uh, we had eight and we uh, we actually were able to do a interview process via Zoom for all of them. Now, the other one is a little different. The other one is actually because it's not a department head, it's actually ordinance one 16, which is an ordinance concerning the appointment of assistant town clerks. And that is for Bianca Vane. So we're looking for a motion to accept Bianca Vane's as assistant town clerk based on ordinance one 16.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Bianca Vane as the assistant town clerk.
I'll second that.
And any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So going along with number seven, um, because then we'd have to change over municipal agents for uh elderly. We have an appointment uh for uh municipal agent for the elderly, which would be Mark Simmons. So I.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mark Simmons as municipal agent for aging for the town of Plainfield.
Okay. I can second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Abstain. Okay. All right, number eight is consider an act on line item transfers. We've been monitoring how we've been doing our money moving back and forth and we're doing so far, we're actually pretty good. There are a few things that are needed to be resolved as of well, we can do it right now. I guess help out the board of finance at their next meeting. But um you'll notice that we're behind on a few things. I know uh Kelly is still here. Yep. But if you have any questions, we can go through them. The idea is that uh we have audit which ran over. Um, it's Markham. Markham is still working on the audit uh piece for the federal part of it, right? Kelly? I know she's there.
Oops, sorry, dog was barking. Yes.
Okay. So Mark, Markham's still finishing up, but it's, it's overrun by 5,000 at this point. So we're looking to, to be able to transfer money from other line items to cover that. On buildings and grounds, um, we have we have actually, um, because of COVID and because of all the cleaning, um, we had a 35 hour person who is at nighttime and she does all the cleaning for us. And so in doing all the COVID cleaning, she's actually now doing 40 hours worth of work. So that number is a little low that I put in the budget. Um, so we do need to modify that to up that number so we can cover that for the rest of the year. Number, the third one down in that list is town building repairs. That's for $3,000 and that happened, like I said, when, when I was talking about how things happen like that. Um, as I'm putting together the final touches for this, we had a call from the animal control office that their heating system went. So uh we were able to, to get ahold of a person to come in to not only buy the unit, but also install it. And that's why the $3,000 is there. Uh, we have contract services. Kelly, probably get, get a little more background on that.
Um, contract services was um oh God. What, what line item is that, Kevin?
Uh, uniform contract, I believe.
Uniform. Okay. It was the highway department. Um, the cost of the uniforms was causing the highway department contract services to go up. So we're going to be a short in there by the end of the year looking at what the cost of the uniforms right now, cleaning of the uniforms are.
Right. We'll modify that number for this upcoming budget, but we need to obv- obviously offset that. So we're a little short there. That's why the $5,000 is listed. Building inspector department head. My fault. I, when I put the budget together, we didn't have a department head at the time because he was still getting certification. Therefore, I didn't have the numbers adjusted as if he would get our pay raise based on the fact he gets his passes test. So the number is short. That's why you can see that number being requested for 22, 908. And then the last one is tax review. Again, for whatever reason, we didn't catch this, but uh you'll notice that there's a um tax review for tax assessment. They pay their um elected officials of small stipend. For whatever reason, the number wasn't, it looked like it just got changed in the final results. So we voted on it. It was below the needed number. So the total number that we're looking for would have been for transfers is 41,916. How do we get there? Um, we're not going to be doing fireworks. Uh, normally that would coincide with the RJ parade and the uh Plainfield pride day. So we've already missed that. So that's $10,000 we can allocate for that. We have about $3,000 in unemployment benefits, which we're okay with right now. Uh, the grant writer salaries, we didn't hire a grant writer for the first six months. So that's why the 22,000 is there. And um again, the same thing with recreation department head salaries. We had allocated for 55,000. We only paid up to 33 at the point, at that point. So we had savings of the, we have a little more than that for savings, but that's where that number comes into for, to be a total of 41, 916. So we need to vote on how we're going to be able to move that forward so we can bring it to the board of finance. So they can then take it to the next step.
So you're looking for a motion?
Yes, please.
Accept that to move it to the board of finance. Is that correct, Kevin?
Correct. Yep.
So I'll make that motion to accept the 41,916, I believe you said.
Yes.
That to the um board of finance for a poll vote.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would ask that there be an entertaining of a motion to add one more line item on to the agenda, item number nine, which is consider an act on appointing a Connecticut water customer advisory council um applicant to that board.
So I'll make that motion, Kevin.
Okay.
Second.
Second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the, we have a couple of positions which are open, been there for a little while. That was one of them. The other one was Eastern Regional Tourism District. I was waiting for someone else to get back to me and had not. I do have an application, well, not an application, but a, a uh a person who is very interested in, in uh working to be on that, on that committee. Uh, her name is Bobby Joe Claproot. Um, so a small background on her history because she just dropped this in today at a little late in the afternoon. She is a HR director for a nonprofit and um she concentrates and assists individuals that are unemployed throughout grant money. And she's also uh in charge of employer relations or had been in charge of employer relations for electric boat for seven years. Um, she moved to Plainfield in May of 2019, 18 years of HR experience in the defense industry and manufacturing. Um, she's proud of the fact that her father served a, uh, in the army. Um, she grew up in Louisiana, Fort, uh, Fort Pope, and she'd be honored if the town of Plainfield would, would allow her to volunteer for this position.
Oh, which position was she?
Yep, this is the Connecticut Water Company, has an opening to be on their advisory council.
I'll make a motion, Kevin, to um have her on the Connecticut Water Customer Advisory Council.
Okay, motions.
Second, could you spell my last name? I just seconded, but could you spell my last name?
Sure, um. Claproot, C L A P P R O O D. Do you have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we can go to other, which is next. I do have some announcements to let people know what's been going on. Um, we've been asked multiple times, um, when are we going to have household hazard waste day? We have in our budget. I've been working with um a gentleman to help us maintain, uh, try to get us on the list, the state of Connecticut DEP. We have finally secured a date. Um, I will come up with more details as to the actual uh particulars, like the hours that it's going to be. Uh, come up with a list for everybody to read through as to what you can and cannot bring up. So this is a household hazard waste day on March 20th, 2021. We'll be having it at our uh one unity drive, which is uh the highway department and uh in that area up there. So we're going to be working on what to, what information to give to the public as to what they can bring, what they cannot. But that'll help tremendously because uh people keep on calling and asking, what do I do with this old gas? Uh, how, how do I get rid of this type of paint? So those are, those are big things that'll help out. Uh, a full list will come out and I'll put a flyer out there as well.
You have a time?
I, to be determined. We're working on exact times. So hopefully by the next meeting, we can get that all buttoned up. I mentioned before, we, we were talking about COVID-19 itself and that uh we will be working, I was approached by Northeast District Department of Health. And we'll be working to have a testing site. And right now we're working as that is a possibility to be have, having that at the senior center. So it's a one-way drive in, drive through for testing. Um, what we're trying to do is come up with all the little what happens if, uh, basically for traffic, for safety. Um, how's, how's this going to be able to work out whether it's Monday through Saturday? Or it's Monday through Friday, how do we do this? So we're still working out particulars, but the anticipation is that we will have a, a testing site in the town of Plainfield at the senior center. When I get more details, I'll, I'll definitely put that out there for everybody. A reminder that the Plainfield Annual Town Meeting, so we can uh review and approve the town audit for the year 2019, is going to be this Thursday. Uh, January 28th at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Um, I was just uh talking to Tom Hennick and we now have a which I'll be putting an email out for everybody, for all those board and commission members. Uh, FOI workshop for all board and commission members be held Wednesday, February 24th at 6:30 PM. Um, I have been in contact with those people who wanted to volunteer to uh work on both tanks in Musa Park and Plainfield Park to do the painting. Um, as well as the group that volunteered to remake the um uh benches. So we're having a planning meeting for that. Uh, fortunate thing is we've tested both tanks for lead paint and it comes up clean. So we're good. Now all particulars have to be done. Uh, we just received confirmation from the state of Connecticut for our neglected cemetery grant today. And we're just waiting for the check and we're going to put a plan in place and have another small meeting with a few people to see what we have for our next steps to do a cleanup of a few of the um designated uh cemeteries.
And I know I see Jason Bowns is almost done with his, getting his nonprofit for it, so.
Which is great. I think that um cooperatively working together on those type of things is fantastic. And well, I'm, I'm Jason and also um, I'll think of his name in a minute. Uh, the other gentleman who was working on putting all that together, getting us some materials so we can actually clean all of the stones.
Michael Passmore.
Passmore, yes. So we talked the other day about that and um putting it all together. We, we think that um, you know, some of that materials could be purchased with that grant money, but we're going to verify it first before we do any of that. But um it, it's good to see that people want to, you know, bring that um that level of volunteerism to a different thing. So I want to thank them for that. I think that's about it unless anybody else has anything else for other. All right. Motion to adjourn. Second, we'll meet you in a few minutes at the WPCA meeting. So uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At 7:44. See you in a few minutes. Once this renders down, we'll be up in about like four or five minutes. All right, the time is now 7:56. I like to call this Water Pollution Control Authority meeting to order for January 25th. And we can get a roll call.
All right, tagging.
Dendrich.
Kevin Cunningham.
Becky Hewitt.
All right, uh, item C, which is to approve minutes from January 11th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Item D, public comment. Hearing none, item E, discuss an act on sewer use adjustment policy. So what we have is a policy talking about sewer use adjustments, and this is the property owner's responsibility to notify the town when there's a change in the uses of said property. It's difficult for the sewer authority to go out and check every single business residence to make sure that there has been no changes. So we always ask if you're a property owner to please um be responsible and come back to the town and let us know that there's a change. The only problem with that is I guess multiple issues. You've got a property owner which sells a property and they don't say anything about this to whomever, to the new owner. They um, you know, you should be responsible for taking care of it yourself. Um, same thing with a business, if they made modifications to the business. Uh, we just had at the last meeting, we talked about a couple of properties that were um reduced based on the occupancy is no longer at one of them. And that there's a reduction at the other. So I think uh Becky, you drafted this one up for us. Is there any highlight that you wanted to mention?
Um, no, we just, we really just needed a policy for the department for when people ask for, say, adjustments and or refunds because we didn't have anything.
This gives them something in, in hand to say this is our policy for it. Um, there's been people in the past who've asked for multiple years because they didn't know about it. And again, it's not our responsibility to go out there and check every single item. Otherwise, that's all we do all year long. So uh really is the onus of the person who has a sewer tie-in so that they can come to us and say that there's been an adjustment because of a, a new business started up, but we haven't used any of those uh uses. So therefore can we make an adjustment? So this is in front of you now for discussion, vote.
I have no discussion. It seems fine to me.
All right. So entertain a motion to accept sewer use adjustment policy.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye. At 7:59. Thank you all and have a good night.